Good evening. The February 16, 2023 meeting of the Woodbridge Township Board of Education will now come to order. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Bourdain?
Here.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Here.
Ms. Perez?
Here.
Mr. Trebowser?
Here.
Mr. Velez?
Here.
And Mr. Mulnar?
Here. Mr. Secretary, as required by the Sunshine Law, please read the notice of meetings.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will note that Mr. Harris is now here as well. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place there posted as follows: January 11, 2023, emailed to the Home News Tribune, the Star-Lager, and the Municipal Clerk's Office, posted in Ross Street School Number 11, and the Board of Education Administration Building, also published on the school district website.
Thank you, Mr. Secretary. Mr. Harris, can you please read tonight's closed session statement?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. In complying with the Sunshine Law, the Board must go into closed session in order to discuss subjects exempted from the public portion of our meeting. The discussions to be held in closed session will be regarding personnel matters, and the Board will receive attorney-client advice. Additionally, there will be a WTEA grievance hearing. Any information regarding the closed-session discussion will be released to the public when the reasons for discussing these matters in closed session no longer exist.
Thank you. I have a motion by Mr. Harris. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Bourdain. With a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The Board will now go into closed session. Please rise for the salute to the flag in a moment of silence.
(Inaudible) United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, omnipotent, just as for all.
Do I have a motion to reconvene?
So motion.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Trebowser, seconded by Mr. De La Pietro. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Bourdain?
Here.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Ms. Perez?
Here.
Mr. Trebowser?
Here.
Mr. Velez?
Here.
And Mr. Mulnar?
Here. Please let the record show that Ms. Anderson and Mr. Sedana both have work engagements this evening, and that's why they are absent tonight. Mr. Secretary, please state for the record any notice of bids received by the Board.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the 2022-23 school year, we opened the following bids: On February 9, 2023, PSA 9216 HVAC upgrades at various schools; and on February 16, 2023, PSA 9205 Woodbridge Kitchen and Roof renovation.
Thank you, Mr. Wolferman. Dr. Massimino, please introduce our student representative from Colonia High School, Joseph Palladino.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before I give the introduction, I know this is breaking with past practice, I just want to say it is a pleasure to introduce Joseph Palladino tonight. I was fortunate enough to serve as this young man's elementary school principal. He was a dynamic young man when he was an elementary student, so reading this is no shock, but it does give me great pleasure to share his successes with the audience, so thank you. Joe is currently ranked fourth in his senior class at Colonia High School and carries a 4.08 GPA into his final semester. Joe has challenged himself academically at Colonia High School by taking 12 advanced placement, six honors, and five college-level courses over his four years. As an 11th grader, he was inducted to the National Honor Society and is currently the president. He also holds the title of President of Science National Honor Society while in grades 11 and 12. He balances these roles with being an officer in the Math Mu Alpha Theta Honor Society and a member of the ROKAPA Honor Society while in grade 12. In addition, Joe has volunteered his time by promoting awareness in our school about environmental issues, peer-tutored students in math and science during lunch and after school, as well as tutored elementary school students. Joe Palladino is not only an academically gifted student, but he has developed talents that lie far beyond what his grades exhibit. As a freshman at Colonia High School, Joe was cast as the voice of the plant in Little Shop of Horrors. The following year, Joe performed in our fall production of one-act plays. Joe was then cast as the charismatic Gomez Adams in the 2022 Spring Musical, The Addams Family. This year, Joe played Wadsworth in the fall production of Clue onstage, and is currently working on the role of Chad in our April production of All Shook Up. Joe recently won the Speech and Theater Association of New Jersey's Governor Award for Shakespeare Performance at their annual competition in January. Joe will be representing Colonia High School at the English-Speaking Union's Shakespeare Competition this month and at the Middlesex County Teen Arts Festival in March. Joe plans to continue his study of theater in order to pursue a career in acting, and has been auditioning for many schools such as NYU's Tisch School of Arts, Carnegie Mellon, University of Michigan, and Emerson, to name a few. Joe, thank you for joining us tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Massimino, members of COLT, President Mulnar, members of the Board of Ed for having me here tonight. To begin with some news, at school number one, the PTO held a fundraiser at Buffalo Wild Wings, and Woodbridge High School students visited grades one and two to discuss traditions for IndyCaritage. An assembly was held to acknowledge the students and all of their kind acts and respectful words during the month of January, and a motivational phrase is currently being read for Mindful Mondays. An art club is also held every Monday. At school four and five, students celebrated World Read-A loud Day. A student from each class read to their principal. The winter concert was also held in January. The school participated in the Have a Heart Food Drive, the Heart the Hallway for the month of February. Kids Dent visited their first and second graders. Students participated in the Kids' Heart Challenge. Students in strath dressed like they were 80 years old to celebrate the 80th day of school and did the same for the 100th. Bollywood dance lessons were also held during recess for students to celebrate IndyCaritage. At school 20, our old haunting ground, students and families created a holiday quilt mural representing diverse family traditions. Students learned about the traditions of Diwali and Ramadan and the geography and cultures of IndyCaritage. Grade four and five students researched the history of the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade balloons and utilized math skills to analyze the parade route and building dimensions to create a math city. PTO held a vendor event at the Acacia Center and also held a gingerbread house decorating event. The 2023 Kids' Heart Challenge is in full swing, and students participated in the Woodbridge Township Have a Heart Food Drive. Cougar Compliments are also decorating the hallways, recognizing students for positive behavior. At school 22, their winter reading program concluded on December 16 with nearly 200 students meeting their weekly goals during the month-long initiative. Their vocal and instrumental winter concert was held on December 19, and the book club met for games and activities related to their latest book, The Magic Treehouse: Sunlight on the Snow Leopard. Their Tiger Buddies program pairs older and younger students together for a classroom lesson on writing. Their Have a Heart Food Drive collected over 2,000 non-perishable food items which will be donated to local food pantries. And students celebrated World Read-A loud Day with read-alouds throughout the day and dressed like they were 100 years old for the 100th day of school. At school 23, students celebrated Republic Day as a part of IndyCaritage Month. Students wore authentic Indian attire and brought in snacks to celebrate the day. Their Student Equity Team will be launching a nutrition awareness program to inform students and parents of the link between nutrition and student outcomes, such as behavior, attention, mood, and academic achievement. February 24 will be their Black American Heritage Day. They will hold a school-wide celebration of Black history and culture in America. Their school-wide spelling bee will begin later this month, and February 24 is movie night for their entire school community. At school 24, the school participated in the Have a Heart Food Drive. They celebrated their 80th days with staff and students dressed up to celebrate the 80s. IndyCaritage Month was also celebrated by decorating the hallway and bringing in the food for the staff. They will be celebrating the 100th day of school by dressing up and having various activities for their students, and historical Black leaders will also be celebrated this month. At school 27, the vocal and instrumental winter concert was held on December 20. The fifth-grade classes collaborated with the seventh-grade class from Avonel Middle School to create children's books for Black History Month. The students read their books to their first and second-grade classes. The PTO held a family movie night on January 20, and the Have a Heart Food Drive is ongoing. The Family Science Program began on February 2 and will continue throughout the month. At Colonia Middle School, they had a special visit from Board of Education member, A.J. Sedana. The program was informative, and their students had a lot of fun learning traditional Indian dances. The Colonia Cup, located in their front lobby, reopened. This is a fully functioning takeout coffee shop that provides our special education students with life skills and running a small business. A grand reopening ceremony is coming soon. Students are celebrating Black History Month with a variety of school-wide activities. An anti-bullying program will be held on February 21 with Mikey Fallon. And a semi-formal will be held on February 22 in honor of 25-plus years in public education for their retiring vice-principal, Mr. Harris. Their Black History Month event will be held at the Independent Club of Colonia on February 23, the video presentation to be shown on February 28. A school-wide PBIS mid-year event will be held on February 24, and the girls' basketball team made it to the district finals. The Community Service Club led their school-wide participation in the township's Have a Heart Food Drive culminating with a visit from Mayor McCormick. And the eighth-grade gifted and talented enrichment students presented their wonderful projects at their convocation, and the Drama Club had an outstanding evening performance. And finally, at Colonia High School, Ms. Natalie Smith, Supervisor for the Hackensack Meridian Health Junior Volunteer Program, spoke to the Medical Careers Club, headed by Ms. Lugo. Haley O'Neill and Marco Marples were accepted into the Medical Explorer Program. The Mu Alpha Theta Mathematics Honor Society induction ceremony was held on November 30, and students from CHS Science Research 1 and 2 submitted entries into the NJ Science Day competition. NJ Science Day had students investigating a problem related to human impacts on NJ's water system and proposing solutions to help improve our New Jersey drinking water situation. Students also entered submissions into the Genes in Space competition sponsored by Boeing and the International Space Station U.S. National Laboratory. Tomorrow's Teachers Adopt a Classroom Scholastic Holiday Book donation went to the Mobbie Street School. And Interact Club collected over 1,000 non-perishable food items to support the St. James Food Pantry. Money raised during bake sales funded a bowling trip for the top contributing classes of the food drive. Additionally, members hosted a hand-in-hand event in which members crafted winter candle holders and played bingo with disabled members of our community. Interact Club and Student Council are planning a Valentine's Day movie night featuring Purple Hearts on February 9 to support our local VFW and promote diabetes awareness. Asian Culture Club held the first Garba at CHS on December 6, and the Asian Culture Club also held hand-up painting fundraisers in preparation for Garba Night. In January, the Asian Culture Club was invited to Woodbridge High School for a low-res celebration, the Indian Harvest Festival. The Asian Culture Club also created the IndyCaritage Month presentations. The Colonia High School Autism and ID Class visited Panera and Wegmans to practice life skills at grocery stores, shopping, and restaurants. The autism class held their first-ever lunchtime snack sale, and the Declaration newspaper received the Audience Engagement Badge and Best of SNO Writing Badge from school newspapers online. The CHS Boys Basketball Team visited school nine and worked cooperatively with the students on a diversity, equity, and inclusion steam activity, and congratulations to Taylor Durkak for surpassing 1,000 points. The CHS Dance Team placed first in the Varsity Jazz category at a Montclair State University competition. They also received a special judges' award for best technique. Tyler McGeehan was the county swimming champ. The boys' basketball team, bowling team actually, clinched the division championships. The Colonia High School Girls That Code Program promoted Taking Coding in High School at Colonia Middle School, as well as presented Women Highlights in STEM, headed by Mr. Pasco. Mr. Phil Dinacola discussed his career as both a police officer and director of the Woodbridge Township Municipal Court at the Law Club meeting. The Colonia Snow Shredders took 41 students and four adults to Camelback Mountain in the Poconos. 64 students were inducted to the ROKAPA Honor Society, and finally, the National Honor Society, Science National Honor Society, inducted 68 students. And thank you all for this opportunity for me to be a part of tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Joseph, for your detailed report. You are more than welcome to join us for the remainder of the evening, but if you do have other plans, we completely understand.
Thank you very much. I'm sorry, but I do have to go. Evening rehearsals, you know how it is.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
The Board would also like to recognize and thank Ms. DiChiara, Administrator from Colonia High School, for taking time out of her busy schedule to be here tonight with Joseph. Dr. Massimino, please state for the record the superintendent's reports for the month of January 2023.
Mr. President, present the following reports: Student registers and fire drill reports, suspension reports for elementary and secondary schools, bomb threat reports, and reports of the attendance officers.
Thank you. Before I open up to the public to comment on tonight's agenda items, Dr. Massimino, do you have anything to report about the district?
Thank you, Mr. President, I do. On December 19, 2022, Mark Vidovic, President of Pomptonian Food Service Management, met with Mr. Wolferman, our Business Administrator, to inform the district that due to extreme increases in costs due to inflation, they would regrettably be giving us a 60-day termination notice of our fixed-price food service management contract effective February 17, 2023. A fixed-price contract does not provide the food service management company with the ability to adjust for inflation or other unforeseen cost increases. In order to ensure that the district provides our students with continued high-quality, healthy meals, the Board will be requesting proposals to switch to a cost-reimbursable model, which will allow the food service management company flexibility should inflation continue. Pomptonian has been a welcomed addition to our district and is receiving overwhelmingly positive reviews since becoming our new food service management company last November, and they are interested in remaining with us under this alternative contract model. By law, the district may not simply switch from one type of contract to another without requesting formal proposals. The new cost-reimbursable contract will have no impact on the quality of meals and no impact on the cost to our students, as the cost will not change. When the district reviews the proposals, past positive experience will be a major factor in selecting a vendor. We will also be looking to ensure any transition be seamless and unnoticedable to our students and staff. This process can take over two months, since approval from the Department of Agriculture's Division of Food Nutrition is required before the solicitation may be advertised. Proposals are due back on March 7 and will be opened and evaluated on that date. The Board expects to award a new contract at the March 9 Board Meeting, with the new contract commencing on March 13. Pomptonian has agreed to continue to honor their current contract through that time. Once again, I want to reiterate that the partnership between the Woodbridge Township School District and Pomptonian has been a positive experience for our students and families. We will continue to provide the same high-quality meals without any increases in cost to our students. We simply need to adjust the type of contract we have with our food service management company in order to have a sustainable relationship in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Massimino. The Woodbridge Township Board of Education welcomes and encourages active, productive, and respectful participation by members of the public, and seeks to protect First Amendment rights to those who engage in the exercise of free speech at this Board of Education meeting. Members of the public are requested to express themselves in a civil matter with due respect for the dignity and privacy of those whose legal rights may be impacted. The public is now invited to speak regarding the agenda items being presented this evening. When you come up to the microphone, please provide your name and the section of the township in which you reside. Among the specific agenda items, numbers you wish to discuss, as per Regulation 1100D, comments must be limited to no more than five minutes. No response will be given until you've completed your opportunity to speak. We will now open up the floor for comments from the public on the agenda items this evening.
Good evening. Tom Maris, Ford, New Jersey. I'd just like to thank that young man that was here. He was brilliant. It's one of the nicest orations I've heard in a long time, and I'm sure he's going to have a very successful career and give a lot of honors back to Woodbridge where he's educated. Couple of questions, if I can. Dr. Massimino just spoke about the increase that's going to happen with the food service. Do you have an approximate idea of what the cost increase might be going from a fixed contract to a variable market rate? Any idea how much it may increase? I know it's not going to increase anything to the students, but obviously, somebody's got to pay that delta because we know it's all going up, exit $8, an example, from $2.
Mr. Maris, do you want to ask all your questions first, and then we could...
If you prefer, yes.
Yeah, let's do it that way.
That is one. The school budget, I know, has gone up under finance. I think that was point number 10, by about $4 million. Can you explain what that $4 million entails? Mr. Wolferman spoke to air conditioning for some schools. Can you particularly enumerate which schools they are and what that cost will be? And finally, on, I believe it's the debt service rate, what is that current interest rate, and what is the duration on that bond debt service? Those are my questions. Thank you.
Okay. I think the first one is the approximate increase of, I guess, the new contract.
Sure. Mr. Maris, we won't know what the change in the cost of the food will be until we actually get the proposals in, so until that happens, we will not know. Want me to go through some of his other...
I'm sorry, I'm just asking because I'd hope that you would have some idea where the market is. When you evaluate the bids that are coming in, you have a cost comparison, so to ensure that all of them, I don't know how many you're going out to, that you have at least a benchmark to work from. That was the reason for the question.
Mr. Maris, the bid is open to any, the RFP is open to any company that chooses to...
Understood.
...to do that, so it's not up to us how many we go out to.
No, I didn't say that. I know you can go out to whoever you wish. What I'm asking is, do you have some history of where you see that curve going in food escalations vis-à-vis other school systems that are going to be operating on the same fix, I should say, variable cost rate? Now, is it going up 10%? You have 15%, 30%, 40% in mind. When these bidders come in and say, "This is our rate," how do you say that those are bona fide rates compared to what is actually happening in the marketplace?
Mr. Maris, as I said, we're going to have to wait till the proposals come in, so I can't tell you what they're going to be.
I'll go from there. All right, thank you.
I'm going to answer some of your other questions.
Yeah, we have the air conditionings, the schools. Do we have the list of who's getting, who's not getting?
Yes. Mr. Maris, the projects for the HVAC are John F. Kennedy, Island Middle and Colonia High School. And the question you had about item 10 on the finance agenda being $4 million, the bulk of that is related to Title I, Title I SIA, Title II, Title III, and Title IV, which are part of the ESEA grants. These are numbers that we are putting on now because they were not finalized through the system that we put it into. They were just finalized now, which is why you're seeing them now, but they are carryover amounts from last year as well as this year's current allocations. They're nothing new, however, until they were input into the system properly and everything was done, they could not be on the agenda.
Point of clarification on the air conditionings. You named the schools, but I didn't hear a figure. And within that figure, is there any contribution...
Mr. Maris, just if we could answer your other questions first, so we don't do the back and forth.
Okay, I'm sorry.
I think your other question was about the debt service rate.
Yes, please.
Yeah, Mr. Maris, I would have to look to see what our current rate is that we're paying on the bonds. There's various bonds that we're paying right now, not all sold at the same time.
Just send me an email. That'll be fine.
I will email you that information. And as far as your question with the air conditioners, it is on Buildings and Grounds Agenda. It does delineate the cost of the three schools.
Okay. Thank you very much.
If I can just jump in real quick?
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to highlight this for the audience and everybody at home. The Title I SIA money, that money is given to those schools who are in targeted status. And Woodbridge, when I took over superintendent, Woodbridge had 13 schools in status, and this gives a nice backdrop for me to share that all 13 schools will be exiting status at the end of this school year. One of the things the state does allow us to do is take that SIA money and roll it over to next year for any transition of plans. They don't want to just stop services or stop what they're doing program-wise, personnel. So they give us some flexibility to, instead of using that money this year, when we're exiting status, to use it this year or next year to transition as we are exiting at the end of this school year. So the money was ours this year, and will be carried over to remain ours for next year.
Good news, and thank you for the explanation.
Excellent.
Thank you. Anybody else with questions for tonight's agendas?
As you know, less council meeting, the mayor will put a traffic light in Colonia Boulevard and the New Dover Road, I believe. And as you know, two years ago, approximately, those two boys got hit over there, walking from Colonia High School. I do believe, and I think we should take consideration, all the kids that walk from any school...
Mr. Vitarek, if I could just stop you. You could bring that up when you have your five minutes in public comment.
Okay.
That sidewalks aren't a part of the transportation...
I understand, but I'm talking transportation, it's not a sidewalk.
Yeah, but this is just comments on the items that we have listed that we're voting Anybody else with tonight's agendas? Superintendent's agenda, Dr. Massimino.
Mr. President, I have 18 items to present to the Board tonight.
Do I have a motion for the superintendent's agenda? Motion by Mr. Trebowser, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Bourdain. Are there any comments or questions from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Mr. President, I have staying on item number 18 in the name of Rutgers, yes to all other items.
Mr. Trebowser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Mr. Mulnar?
Yes. Policy and planning agenda, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Policy and Planning Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools presents the following 10 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Harris. Do I have a second?
Motion.
Seconded by Ms. Perez. With a motion and a second, are there any comments from the Board?
Mr. President?
Mr. Harris?
I just want to highlight two items on my agenda here, items number nine and 10. Specifically, item number nine, there's an amendment to this current year's student budget, student calendar, wow, slipping here, student calendar for Tuesday, March 14. That will be an early dismissal for both elementary and middle school students only. That has to do with the bond referendum or voter referendum that we'll be discussing later on in the agenda. We'll get to that shortly. And then item number 10, some parents were asking about this on the social media. Specifically, we will be adopting the 2023-2024 student calendar, so be on the lookout for that. I know the administration typically posts that tomorrow or anytime in the near future on the district's social media and district website. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Any other comments from the Board? Roll call, Mr. Wolferman.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Mr. Mulnar?
Yes. Curriculum agenda, Mr. Trebowser.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Curriculum Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction presents the following five items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Trebowser, do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. De La Pietro. With a motion and a second, are there any comments from the Board?
Mr. President? Oh, good. Sorry, Mr. President, I just wanted to point out that the pay extended school year dates have been set and are item number two on the agenda.
Thank you. Mr. Harris?
You know, I jumped the gun. Sorry, I'm good.
Okay. Roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. De La Pietro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Trebowser?
Yes.
Yes. Finance and insurance, Mr. Treibosser.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Finance and Insurance Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary presents the following 14 items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
I have a motion by Mr. Treibosser. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Perez. Are there any comments or questions from the board?
Mr. President?
Mr. Vice President Harris?
I'll jump in. No other member has jumped on it. Item number 14, this was brought up recently by some members of the public urging that if we were to not move forward with the construction of a new school four and five on Rowway Avenue, that voters be given the opportunity to vote on it, to erect a school or significant renovation on the existing school number four and five. We are following through on that at the recommendation of attorneys in the Department of Education. Dr. Massimino, Mr. Wolferman, along with the township administration have worked, as well as our engineer, have worked diligently over the past three months to arrange for this referendum, schedules for Tuesday, March the 14th, which will be asking the voters of the township to move the, to approve the construction of a significant renovation at school, at the existing school four and five located on Avonell Street, instead of the designated address on Rowway Avenue that stems from the 2020 referendum where it was a specific address where the new school four and five would have been erected. Again, instead, no additional money will be needed. The existing funds that would have been used for the construction of a new school will simply be used for a renovation at the existing site on Avonell Street. So that is before the voters on Tuesday, March the 14th. That concludes my remarks. Thank you, Mr. Mulnar.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Any other board members?
Mr. Mulnar, if I may.
Dr. Massimino.
Through the chair, just to piggyback Mr. Harris saying, March 14th, we will be voting two to eight. The polling sites will be open, hence the half day for the elementary and middle school students. Aftercare will remain open. We will provide security because obviously there has to be different measures with the building be accessible to voters. So we will make the accommodations. We recognize the need for parents to utilize aftercare. I've been one of those parents, so I understand the need for that. And our administration will work to make sure that those sites are either merged or moved, but that aftercare is available and there will be security provided. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Massimino. Finance and insurance, roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. Delapetro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Treibosser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
And Mr. Mulnar?
Yes. Buildings and grounds agenda, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. President. Buildings and grounds Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and Business Administrator present the following one item. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Have a motion by Mr. Harris. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Delapetro. Are there any comments or questions from the board?
Mr. President?
Mr. Harris?
Just real quick. Item number one, we're spending $10.5 million that we received from the federal government under the COVID rescue plans that all school districts were privy to. The administration has sought to it with the board's approval that to use a portion of that money towards univentilators to ensure that fresh air is coming in and out of the classroom. So three school buildings will receive a replacement of their univentilators that are scheduled to be replaced. That's JFK High School, Isla Middle School, and Colonial High School. In addition to the univentilators, some of the schools have rooftop units that will be replaced. In those great circumstances, those rooftop units provide not only circulation but also air conditioning. So that's great news. And then just not on the item specifically number one is the fact that typically annually we're asked around the spring, as we're heading into the warmer months, about the status of air conditioning in student classrooms. The Buildings and Grounds Committee, as discussed this week in the Buildings and Grounds Committee, will be doing an audit of all the classrooms, which ones are air conditioned, which ones are not. It helps us during our budget process to ensure that we continue to move towards 100% classrooms being air conditioned. So we're very happy about that and appreciate the Buildings and Grounds team's work. And I'm happy to report that over the years, we have incrementally gotten closer and closer to 100% through the diligent work of Mr. Wolferman and his team. I'll be delighted to provide a report at a future board meeting on the status of air conditioning in all our classrooms. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Vice President. Any other comments from the board on B&amp;J? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. Delapetro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Treibosser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
And Mr. Mulnar?
Yes. Transportation agenda, Mr. Delapetro.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Transportation Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary presents the following six items. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Have a motion by Mr. Delapetro. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Perez. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. Delapetro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Treibosser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Mr. Mulnar?
Yes. Cafeteria agenda, Ms. Perez.
The Cafeteria Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and the Business Administrator Board Secretary presents the following one item. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Have a motion by Ms. Perez. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Delapetro. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. Delapetro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Treibosser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Mr. Mulnar?
Yes. Equity Commission agenda, Mr. Treibosser.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Equity Commission, the Equity Commission Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools presents the following one item. I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you. Have a motion by Mr. Treibosser. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Bourdain. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. Delapetro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Treibosser?
Yes.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
Mr. Mulnar?
Yes. Personnel agenda, Mr. Harris.
Thank you, Mr. Mulnar. The Personnel Committee on Recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools and Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources present the following 49 items. There is an addition. Everyone has an agenda with 48 items. We're adding a 49th, and I'll read that here, that the Board of Education hereby denies WTEA grievances A 22-03 and A 23-01. Mr. President, I move for the adoption of the foregoing.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Perez. Are there any comments or questions from the board? Roll call, Mr. Secretary?
Ms. Bourdain?
Yes.
Mr. Delapetro?
Yes.
Mr. Harris?
Yes.
Ms. Perez?
Yes.
Mr. Treibosser?
Yes. Oh, excuse me. I have standing the name Valerie Henderson in items 31 and 32. Yes on all other items.
Mr. Velez?
Yes.
And Mr. Mulnar?
Yes. Mr. Bush, do you have any recommendations this evening?
Not at this time, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any old business that should be brought to the attention of the board? Is there any new business?
Mr. President?
Ms. Bourdain?
I just wanted to highlight that we are going to have a planned winter president's council meeting held on Monday, March 6th at 7:00 PM. It will be a virtual meeting. The link will be made available shortly. The meeting will cover the March 14th referendum, board updates, and other township updates. That's all.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Harris?
I just have one shout out. It's a little lengthy. I apologize. But it couldn't have been possible without Mr. Prosserino's help and, you know, the head nurse here in the district. As I think any sports fan saw or has read here in the state of New Jersey, there was the unfortunate incident of a professional football player with the Buffalo Bills who during a football game suffered a cardiac arrest. And then since then, throughout the state, there's been a couple high school students and elementary students who collapsed on the court, particularly playing basketball. So the Athletics Committee, Board Member Ms. Anderson, Mr. Mulnar and I, we reached out to the administration to ask for an update. How are we doing in the area of cardiac arrest? Are we prepared should such an emergency take place? So our first question to the administration was on the status of AED machines. Those are the automatic defibrillators, electric defibrillators, I think they're called, that are used to shock people's heart back into, you know, back into rhythm. The administration provided us with this update. AED machines and AED supplies, i.e. pads and batteries, are maintained in the buildings by the school nurse and checked on a daily and monthly basis per manufacturer's instructions. AED electro pads and battery expiration dates are kept in nurses' offices, inventoried, and ordered annually for the school year. And as needed, older AED machines have been replaced over the last couple of years. We currently have one model, AED, to ensure continuity and transferability between models. So our schools are equipped with AED machines. Thank you, Mr. Prosserino and your team. Secondly, we had asked about AED machines and their accessibility to sporting events. The administration provided us with a response. This is assessed on an annual basis and as needed. And the AED machines have been, you know, reassessed and additional AED machines will be added and strategically located throughout the district. Next up, the committee had asked about the status of CPR certified personnel. The administration responded that coaches and athletic trainers are CPR and AED certified. The district audits this seasonally. So we have three sports seasons throughout the year, fall, winter, and spring, and provide necessary trainings as needed. That's terrific. And then last but not least, we inquired about the accessibility of additional CPR training for those who are interested. The administration provided us with the following response. Each school has a Code Blue team with a minimum of five CPR slash AED trained staff members, as well as a Code Blue emergency response plan with practice drills. CPR classes for staff is run throughout the school year on an as-needed basis or if requested. Four school nurses and a lead nurse are CPR and AED certified instructors, and they run classes for staff and coaches again as needed or as requested. And then actually, there was one final question we had here about the availability and accessibility of ambulances at football games, and the administration supplied a response. There is an ambulance at every varsity football game. So kudos to the administration for being ready and for taking the initiative to ensure that we are ready should such a worst-case scenario happen. So thank you, Dr. Massimino and your administration. Thank you, Ms. Prosserino. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. And the AED unit is on the back wall as you exit the gymnasium right here. On that note, with Mr. Harris, when it comes to the training, the CPR and the AED training, I know the township of Woodbridge, the Recreation Department, we went into an AED program with our youth sports. And the gentleman who runs that program for us, John Cook, he has classes periodically to train new coaches and new staff. And we could partner up with the Board of Ed if there are any employees that would like to sit in on that class. We deal with Team Life down in, I believe it's Howell. But, you know, we will be more than happy if the administration has any employees to send, you know, to be part of the classes that we have. Is there any other new business? We will now open the meeting for public comment. When you come to the microphone, please provide your name and the section of township which you reside. As per regulation, 1100 the comments must be limited to no more than five minutes. No response will be given until you have completed your opportunity to speak. Now open up for public comment.
Five-minute countdown. Paul Lund, Hoplawn. Lady I've come to know recently by name of Angela Redding. She made news. She's a mother of an elementary school child in Burlington County. She went to the school and saw a poster in the lobby, the front lobby, that had all forms of sexuality, including pansexuality and polysexuality and so forth. She was concerned. You know, she comes from traditional values. She doesn't believe an elementary student is ready to discuss matters of sex, certainly discuss ideas or concepts or theories about gender. And she expressed her concerns in a Facebook post. She was very gracious. She was not attacking anyone. She was just concerned about the welfare of her child. A local army-based commander saw the post and said that took her to be a threat and reported her to various law enforcement authorities. She got to tell her story on a major news network. And that story is still in process. I tell you that to say this. I believe it takes more courage these days to come to a Board of Ed meeting and bring up concerns around the sex ed, because a lot of times you get a lot of pushback. You're called a hater. You're called names. And apparently law enforcement wants to know who you are. And I will mention, I normally don't mention, but there's a gentleman here who speaks out on anti-racism. And to me, in this day and age, in the year 2023, I don't think it takes courage to stand up for equal rights. I think, you know, maybe if it was in the 1860s or the 1960s in the South, in the, you know, the Jim Crow South, maybe that would take courage, but not at this stage. We've made too many strides at this point. I want to get back into the sex ed here. There's a lot of local, there's a lot of headlines out here that have come out recently. We all know that there's been a sharp increase in the incidence of gender dysphoria. It actually used to be about 0.39%, but in the past several years of making it, you know, a major subject and now a major subject in schools, it's now looked closer to 9%. Historically, there were small numbers of children presenting with gender dysphoria. They were primarily prepubescent males. Now they find in recent years, there's been a sharp increase in referrals of adolescents and particularly adolescent females to gender clinics. Now, my first question is, I've been around long enough to know that body image is of particular concern to young ladies and girls. I remember when anorexia, and probably still is, a big issue. And it's a form of body dysmorphia. It's literally young girls, usually young girls, who think that they are heavy when they're thin. Some of the parents, and actually one of the people I work with at No Left Turn in Education, compared it to taking someone who has anorexia, a body dysmorphia, and putting them on a diet to comply with their wishes. I don't think that there's moral sense to that. And I think you could draw parallels to taking someone who has a false sense or feels they're in the wrong body or has body dysmorphia, which is a disorder in the DSM-5, and giving them puberty blockers. Now, the Dutch studies that opened up the doors and the floodgates to affirmation care, these are the Dutch studies. There's a report out now that the myth of reliable research in pediatric gender medicine focuses on two Dutch studies that gave rise to gender affirmative care for youth worldwide. The Dutch research suffers from profound, previously unrecognized problems. The problems range from erroneously concluding that gender dysphoria disappeared as a result of gender affirmative treatment, to reporting only the best-case scenario outcomes and failing to properly examine the risks despite the fact that a significant proportion of the treated sample experienced adverse effects. There are known irreversible effects to puberty blockers. These were only meant for, you know, early onset puberty. They were meant for use on a limited time. Now they're being used as off-label in clinics, off-label use. That means not approved by the pharmaceutical makers. And therefore, when things go badly, they're not liable for lawsuit.
Mr. Lund, that's your five minutes?
I have one question on the floor.
You started out by saying you want to make a question, and then you turned that question into a point.
Is it a moral equivalence to put an anorexic on a diet as it is to take someone with body dysmorphia, gender dysphoria, and put them on puberty blockers, which are off-label and inappropriate to use on children?
Thank you for your question. I'm not a doctor. I don't even want to pretend to even answer that question.
And teachers are not clinicians. They should not be the gateway to affirming.
Thank you, Mr. Lund.
You're welcome.
Mary Shrek Fords. I just wanted to ask a question. I've just heard lots of rumors. People talk a lot. And I'm just here tonight to see if we could get some answers on School 14, so.
Dr. Massimino.
Fair enough. I've been having ongoing discussions with the board. One of the primary goals of mine since I took over as superintendent, I would like to get as many schools as possible. I like the ideas of the neighborhood schools. It's one of the schools that I went to. I think there's a certain beauty and charm to them, just in terms of the comfort that parents have with our neighborhood schools. And I believe School 14 to be one of them. I know, I'm well aware of what the plans were for School 14 when the referendum was voted on, which was obviously before I took over this position. Being that the School Four and Five project has taken, I mean, we literally just got approval to go out to referendum to use the remaining monies, that changes the initial plan of the referendum. I would like to explore, and I'm putting all options on the table, what we have to do to keep School 14 open. And by proxy, what we may have to do to improve it, whether it's renovations, any kind of work to update it, you know, bring it up to speed. Obviously, there's been some scaffolding around it for some time now. So I am working with our architects, and I'm also working with the board, because obviously that would come at a significant cost. But I do think it's something we have to seriously explore. I would like to keep School 14 in our district. So at this current point, we are exploring every option that we can. I'm hoping to have news in the upcoming board meetings. I recognize that we are getting, late in this school year, parents want an answer. I wish I had one today. I couldn't control the pandemic. Obviously, that really pushed the referendum back. It's just delayed everything.
Sure.
We are working as quickly as possible so that I can give the families and community of School 14 an answer.
Okay. So basically, what you're saying overall is, and I know the original plan was to move 14 to 25, which is why the addition went on, but now we're at a standstill. We're not 100% sure if the children from 14 will then move to 25 at this point?
Correct. I'd like to speak with our architects and engineers. Because I wasn't here for the initial referendum, I'm not as familiar with what work may need to be done. And obviously, that was, you know, whatever estimates were given were years ago. And we all know what the cost four years ago means now, and it's completely different.
Sure, sure.
So I want to be responsible, obviously, with the financial responsibility that comes with that. But I also am very sensitive to the fact that that is an important piece of the, you know, the Fords community over there in School 14. I've spoken with, you know, our board members who, you know, are from Fords and represent many of those communities. So we are working diligently. I will give an update as soon as I have some, then I can share with the community, because I know you're waiting.
Okay. So you can't really kind of Okay, so you can't really kind of give a pinpoint. I'm always a person with a date. I always have to throw a date out there. So you can't say, like, May 1st, you're going to know something. I hope it's before May 1st, to be quite honest with you, but...
I pray it's before May 1st, and I'm certain it will be.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
As I spoke before, Woodbridge decided to put a traffic light on Udo Road and Willie Bullwood. Obviously, I believe that's the first traffic light in state section in Colonial. It is a dangerous road, we all know that. As you know, last year, or the year before, those two boys got hit over there. And I believe now, because of traffic light, you would have to your school guard, school crossing guard, everything else. And I believe the school responsibility is for children the minute they leave the house. If you are responsible for cross people on Amboy Avenue, if you're responsible for child crossing any street, you're just responsible if the kids are walking on the road. If you do a different school district, different counties, they live by two, three blocks away from the school, but they bus the kids to school. You know why? There's trees, there's woods, there's no houses. And I believe Colonial is in the same kind of a predicament. You've got a lot of vacant, so-called open space. And the way that we are living now in our society, kids are most precious to be got. And I don't think it's safe to walk those streets, especially at night, or anytime during the day, there's no houses. And of course, there are sidewalks. And obviously, I know those two boys that got hurt, there was settlement made, and I know who paid for it, insurance, I know the school board did something again. We should take responsibility for this. Do not try to save money on something that's put kids in danger. Because I realize that, the township realizes that they are, it's needed. So please consider it, again. I want to go back to a question, Mr. Morris, was asked about the food budget. I think any contract you do but food should not expire in the middle of the school year or anytime. Should be from the beginning of the year to end of the year. So you can take that in a, when somebody bid on it, because now if you're going to bid next month, you have no choice, whatever they had it, you've got to take it. So again, maybe honest, maybe it's good, maybe it's bad, again. I want to go back to School 14. There was a lot of things said about the school there. People should be asked, most of the people I talked to over 50 years, they buy the houses where the schools are. They bought those houses in the Fords over there because they like the school is. And I think it should be to the people of the area, especially Ford's area, School 14, if they want to keep the school open. We just can't say what's cheaper, or it's easier, or this or that. Schools should be where the little kids are. I don't say high schools, I don't even say middle schools, but elementary schools should be where the kids are. And if you look at a building, I don't know, I was never inside, but to me, it's just as good building in any building that we got so far. So please consider it, because we need more school. Like Dr. Mr. Miller said, more schools. And again, School Four and Five. Question is, probably about two years behind already on the job. How long is it going to take to the school to actually, to be open? You talk to the teachers, you talk to anybody else, the school's overcrowded, you need more schools, you need more room. And how much time is it going to take to make it happen that the school is completed? And I guess sooner the better. But again, most important to me is that safety of the kids, good education. And of course, without it, they don't have a future. Thank you. The first question on the...
All right, so the first question, Dr. Massimino, the food budget, the expiration, why in the middle of the school year?
Mr. Vertaric, we didn't initiate this. This is something that Pomtonian initiated. We didn't reach out to them. They reached out to us to explain to us that they would have to leave if there wasn't a change in the model, which is why we went out to an RFP. We're taking the bids to see what we can get in that model.
Well, did they have a contract from a day-to-day, or they were just from day-to-day?
It's a year contract. We didn't initiate the action mid-year. They initiated it.
I understand, but shouldn't they be penalized to do this?
Well, we, I thought Mr. Wolferman explained a little bit. I'll try to explain it again. We engage in a contract. They are a vendor. They didn't like the model that was being followed. They reached out to us. We have to have a food service provider. So I'm not in the, I'm not worried about penalizing them, I'm worried about making sure we have a food service provider.
I understand.
The steps we're taking are to make sure that that happens. I'm much less concerned with the penalty of this and more concerned with making sure the process is appropriate so that we can ensure that a quality food service system is presented in our district, which Pomtonian has been. So we welcome their participation in this process, as well as any other interested...
Dr. Massimino, if I could just interrupt you. Mr. Vertaric, your five minutes is up. The administration will answer your questions, but we're not going to go with the back and forth. Your five minutes are up.
Mr. Mulnar?
Mr.?
Could I add two points to Dr. Massimino's? That one Pomtonian was losing money, so in that interest, they had, under the contract, they had to give us a 60-day notice that they were going to sever ties, and they followed that to the letter. So our hands were effectively tied. They had an out on the contract, they exercised it with the appropriate notice, and, you know, as a result, we have to go back out for a bid, and we want to ensure smooth continuity of food service, whether it's with Pomtonian or with a successor food service company.
All right, so now the second question was, well, then it turned into a point about School 14. The School Four and Five question, do we have some sort of an estimate of when? I mean, we still didn't get the referendum passed. We still have to do that.
Yeah, I would be remiss to give an estimate on something that has yet to be voted on. I'll be candid.
Thank you.
I will say short and sweet that we will provide the best food option for our students as possible. And for Four and Five, we do take the safety of our students and staff very seriously, and we will, you know, we will take all that into consideration when we do the Four and Five project, just like we did with this building right here, School 11.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vertaric.
Good evening again, Tom Harris, Forts, New Jersey. Thanks for some of that clarification. Last week I had the informative, I'll put it that way, meeting with the, I shouldn't say meeting, but being able to attend the Perth Amboy Board of Education meeting. I was very impressed with the way they do it. I would ask that perhaps our superintendent and the board members review one of their tapes, particularly last week's, because I think it's highly informative. And that's not to speak ill of ours, because I think ours are very good, probably one of the better ones in the state. But there were some things there, and I can't spend a lot of time on it, as much as I'd like to. But if you just take the time and look at it, I think you'll find it very informative in the way that they treat the public, and also the way that they treat people coming up to speak. And again, I'm not demeaning anybody here. Just look at it and see what you think. Maybe we can improve a little bit. And I suggested to them that they might want to look at ours, because a lot of things are done very well here, too. Pardon me, excuse me. In regards to Schools Four and Five, on the referendum, I totally agree with you, it'd be premature to say anything until that's out. But I believe you said the voting is going to be from 2:00 to 8:00. I'd like to know where that voting is going to be held? Will it be held at all polling places? Will there be mail-in ballots? And what public notifications will you render? And at what point in time will they be rendered so the public is well aware of it and will have a chance to come out and vote at the proper locations at the proper time? Point number three, I believe at the last meeting, I broached the subject of gun education programs. Subsequent to that, I have had further discussions with Director of Police, sorry, Bob Hubner, who would be in favor of such programs. And I say that because we've spoken a lot about sex education in 5th grade. We talk about children using drugs and teaching them the dangers of it. But again, we see within this state a movement under our Second Amendment rights to be able to carry guns. Although that's kind of being stymied, if you will, as best they can by the woke individuals. The Supreme Court is still stepping in and allowing us to go forward with that. So I would encourage you to at least look into education programs that would teach children what guns are about and how to be safe with them, particularly if they're in their home. Whether they eventually become hunters or gun enthusiasts, whether they want to collect or shoot, it's worthwhile. There's a lot of great programs out there, but it's a safety issue. And if you teach a child to respect anything, whether it be a car, a bow and arrow, a knife, they are much more informed, and they are also in a better position to say, hey, there's a red flag over here, because I know this should not be going on with another child or another adult. So again, please consider it and maybe give us a report back. And fourth, I see today, good old Phil Murphy, who obviously has presidential aspirations, good luck with that, is now saying that the schools in New Jersey will have to expand AP African Advanced Placement, African Studies. They do not cite which schools will have to do that in the high schools. By law, according to the paper, courses have to be offered, but they are optional as to whether the schools will. I guess my base question with the time I'm allotted is, is Woodbridge going to follow Mr. Murphy's mandates, again, to start these classes within our school system? And if so, why?
That's it, John. Thank you. Ladies. Thank you, Mr. Harris. As far as the polls, I believe this election will be just like any other election in town. Same polling locations, vote by mail, notifications will be done in accordance to state law for elections. So all that will be the same. Your other comment now, Dr. Massimino, your question about the AP African Studies, if you'd like to comment on that.
Mr. Harris, I'm going to send this over to Mr. Prosserino, our Assistant Superintendent for Criminal Instruction. I just want to note that we had a pilot for this course that started in 2020. So it has been started in 2020. So this isn't something new for us, but I'll let Mr. Prosserino talk about some of the specifics.
Thank you, Dr. Massimino. Mr. Harris, as Dr. Massimino stated, we did offer the pilot to all three of our high schools for African-American studies during the 2020, 2021 school year, as well as the 2021, 2022 school year. Curriculum was written as it was with any other course. There's a panel of teachers, a supervisor that oversees it, and it's currently being offered in all three high schools. It was taken this fall at Woodbridge, Kennedy, and Colonial.
So this is well the answer to whatever Governor Murphy is saying. That was really the question. And just as a curious question, what was the participation rate in that, and how did it grade out?
Mr. Harris, that'll be the last question.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thank you.
I don't have the participation rates. We did offer that. I can't give it to you specifically over the two. I can certainly get you that information. But we did offer that class, as I said before, as a pilot in those, in all three of those high schools. The teachers that were involved in the pilot were the ones that were instrumental in developing the curriculum with the supervisor. You know, there was feedback taken from the students that were in that class during the pilot, and it was recently adopted this summer, well in advance of that. I would like to point out two things to your question before. It is not a college-level course. We currently offer it as an S and an R-track elective course. So it's really meant, you know, as an elective. It's not a required component in the program of studies, but it does offer the students, as we're trying to expand all of our courses, an option.
I'd like to reach out to you separately and discuss this further at some point in time. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Good evening, Jimmy DeBrowski, Secretary, Perth Amboy Area Branch NAACP. Our area's oldest and largest civil rights organization would like to share the following call to action. Please join us this Tuesday, February 21st, at 5:30 PM at Woodbridge Town Hall to rally against the plans for yet another polluting power plant in Kaysabee, the lowest-income and least white section of our township. Residents from all over New Jersey are coming together to rally against the Competitive Power Ventures Corporation, CPV, and their plans to put another one of their massive dirty gas plants right next to their existing monstrosity that's been spewing out toxins nonstop since 2016. This would be the third fossil fuel plant in Woodbridge Township and the seventh in Middlesex County. This plant would further pollute our air and water, exacerbate the climate crisis, and adversely affect our health and the health of our students and our future generations. Instead of using his authority to reject this polluting project, Governor Murphy and his Department of Environmental Protection are allowing it to proceed without any environmental justice impact statement, and they've even failed to provide proper notice of an upcoming CPV hearing. As this hearing approaches, we are rallying to bring attention to this cause and organize the community against CPV. During the rally, we will also go inside Town Hall to the council meeting to raise our concerns with the Woodbridge Mayor and his Township Council, who sadly voted in favor of this fossil fuel plant. In fact, on the CPV website, Mayor John McCormick was even quoted saying, "CPV has been just a great citizen in Woodbridge, a great partner with the township. We love working with them. I wish they could open up five more power plants. I'd let them do it tomorrow because they've been such a great corporate citizen with us and have partnered with us." In the spirit of this year's Black History Month theme, Black Resistance, the Perth Amboy Area Branch NAACP is calling on people of conscience to please join us on February 21st as we resist CPV's plans for yet another fossil fuel power plant in our overburdened environmental justice community. While many are simply about talking the talk during Black History Month, our nation's oldest and largest civil rights organization has always been about walking the walk, consistently standing against injustice and speaking truth to power. At our 113th National Convention this past summer, the NAACP passed an environmental justice resolution calling for the end of all new fossil fuel exploration, extraction, and infrastructure. The Perth Amboy Area Branch NAACP intends to put that resolution into action on February 21st as we rally for environmental justice. So while it was nice to see a Pan-African flag finally raised for the first time in Woodbridge, we'd like to remind you that the flag is a symbol of Black resistance. And if you're truly about Black resistance, you'll stand with our nation's oldest and largest Black resistance organization as we resist this proposed environmental injustice. Or you could stand with the Competitive Power Ventures Corporation and their buddy Mayor John McCormick, who callously refuses to affirm that Black Lives Matter, even going so far as to call our nation's largest Black resistance movement, quote-unquote, awful. The NAACP Image Awards, which was created as a form of Black resistance to white-centered award shows, will take place on February 25th. An activist-poet Amanda Gorman is nominated for the Outstanding Guest Performance category for her appearance on Sesame Street. In the episode, Amanda shows Bert and Ernie how we can use our voices to express our feelings and support one another, especially when we do it together. She and Gabrielle also help Grover learn how to be an upstander instead of a bystander, and how we must stand up and use our voice when something isn't right. Building a third fossil fuel power plant in our overburdened environmental justice community simply isn't right. That's why 12 surrounding municipalities thus far have formally stood against the proposed project, including Perth Amboy, where I'm a proud public school teacher. Our Perth Amboy Area Branch NAACP President, Reverend Donna Stewart, would like to invite our community members to do more than just talk about Black history, but stand up right now for a Black future. And join us on February 21st at 5:30 PM at Woodbridge Town Hall as we rally to stop the Competitive Power Ventures Corporation and their political cronies from further polluting our environment. Please visit don'tgasmiddlesex.com to learn more about this disastrous project and what you can do to help stop it. We hope to see you on February 21st as we stand together against injustice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeBrowski. Any other public comment? The Chair will recognize a motion to adjourn.
So a motion.
A motion by Mr. Trebusser, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Meeting's adjourned.